Call our meeting to order and ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, just a reminder, save yourself some embarrassment. I just checked my phone. You might want to silence yours. Move on to our routine business and look for a motion to approve our agenda. So move.
A second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to our consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Bennega.
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Kipli?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye. Motion carries.
Moving on to our regular business. Just to make sure that if you are going to speak today, we do have a sign in. We'd just like to, for the record, make sure that everybody's name and address is available. And our first item on our regular business is consider a recommendation to submit a letter of concern to the Public Utilities Commission regarding Heartland Greenway Navigator Pipeline, similar to the other pipeline letter that we sent out several months ago. Tyler?
Good morning, Tyler Platt, Commission Office. Commissioner Karski is right, it's practically identical. The letter for your consideration today outlines the similar concerns that were mentioned as the Commission considered what to do regarding the Summit Carbon Pipeline. For your consideration, again, is to determine whether this is something you'd like to send to the PUC to be put on their official record.
Alrighty. Comments from the Commission? Questions? Okay, we will take public input on this. Is anybody here that would like to speak to this item? Good morning.
Morning. Gary Meyer, Minnaha County. I fully agree with the letter. I think you should do it. But I have a concern. I talked to Chris Nelson a year ago today when this came up, and unfortunately, your letter doesn't do much good. They read it and they put it in a file. Unless you take action, the PUC does not consider the county taking any kind of steps. It does not have an opinion. Your letter is good, but he said it basically goes in a file along with all the other complaints, and that's as far as it goes. So I agree, send the letter, but you really need to take some action to send a message to the PUC.
Thank you, sir. Gary, did Gary introduce himself? Okay, make sure. Make sure we don't miss anything for the record. Thank you, Gary. Alright, any other comments? Commission comments, motions?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner?
I think, yeah, I think as Tyler said, this is the same letter. I think maybe some circumstances have changed since we wrote this letter. I think I'd probably like the opportunity to maybe work with Commission staff and maybe reword some things. I guess I'm also mainly interested in this from a emergency response. I see that we have like the lack of response, emergency response training being provided to local authorities. I think we've had some progress on that, that we might want to take into account. And anyway, I guess I'm just not quite at the point where this is ripe to be sent. Maybe I'd ask a question of Tyler or any staff. Do we have a sense on any deadline to get any comment to the PUC?
There is no deadline necessarily as far as to me. The PUC has set a final hearing date for, or a decision date, rather, for Navigator. Their final order will be submitted by September 27th of this year. So we have roughly seven months before that final decision is made.
Okay, yeah, so Mr. Chair, I guess I, and I wasn't asking for months, probably just a few weeks. I had a few pending questions among staff on this matter too. So if we weren't feeling it necessary to take action on this and send this today, I would be of the mind to get a little bit more time, but happy to take some input from my colleagues here too.
Mr. Bennega?
Well, I can wait, that's for sure. I don't think that we're going to see any activity from the PUC until September. And we don't want to start our clock significantly ahead of time because frankly, we weren't acknowledged in the last conversations that we've had. And having personal appearances and all those kinds of things need to happen. We don't know for sure if the PUC is going to approve the permits or not. I think that we have some ordinances and some other pieces as Commissioners just mentioned. I think the biggest problem that we all have is security and location of where those final processes are going to be. I think those have changed multiple times. We don't know exactly where the final route is going to happen at. So we'll deal with that, and I think that waiting a few weeks isn't going to make a big difference right now.
Commissioner?
I would agree. I think I'm not in any hurry to send it, and I would, I would be in favor of taking time to make sure that we've included every detail that we feel is significant.
So Commissioner Kipli, I'm hearing that you want to word summit this a little bit and kind of refine it maybe, bring it back for our consideration. Is that a motion?
Yeah, I'd move to defer this item. I don't know if we have to have a date certain to reconsider.
I think we should.
We should.
I think we should.
Yeah, I think a month is sufficient. So do we have a, the last meeting in March?
March 21st.
March 21st?
Yeah.
Yeah. I would move to defer this item to March 21st.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Kipli?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye. Motion carries. Alrighty, moving on. Presentation from Minnaha County Emergency Management and Rural Fire and Ambulance Services. Good morning, Jason. Heard that we might have a chance to snow. Are you involved in that in any way?
I was going to get to that at the end, but we can certainly start out with that.
I don't want to interrupt you.
You're going to have some decisions to make probably Wednesday and Thursday. Reference the storm. It's supposed to get pretty nasty about that time, so. This is Jason Gierman, Minnaha County Emergency Management. Here today to give you a quick presentation on what's kind of going on with emergency management right now. Come on. Trish, a little help? No, I can scroll it. Sorry about that. Here's the definition of emergency management. I'm not going to read that. Basically, you know, some of the things we do isn't really in that definition. A lot of it's outside of that, but a lot of liaison work between fire, sheriff's office, police department, and ambulance. We also oversee volunteer programs, police reserve, rescue, and the dive team. Police reserves, currently there's about 40 of them. That's way down from where we've been about four or five years ago. Last year, we did not hold a class because of, we only had about four people that qualified. I think 10 or 15 applied through the vetting process. We ended up with about four, so we canceled the class. It just wasn't efficient enough at that time to make it. This year, we have 10. We haven't lost anybody yet, so hopefully that class will graduate in a couple of months here yet, so. All volunteers, they have to work a minimum of eight hours a month, and you know, they do donate a lot of hours, as you see around 9,000 hours a year. The rescue squad, it kind of goes up and down. We're about 15 right now. This is one of the places that they really help Rural Fire with taking, you see that truck there on the bottom right. That's the cascade system. They help Rural Fire go out and fill their air tanks during structural fires. They also do water rescue. They're really involved with emergency medical. Most of them are EMTs, and they do a lot of assistance with traffic accidents out on the interstate or as needed. And then, you know, we have had them out helping with severe weather response. They were out during the summer duratio, and they've also been out to assist with the late, with the last winter storms. And again, with what's coming up here, they'll be available for that too. They've also been helping me with snow removal. They come in and run our plow truck and plow my lot, which is pretty nice. Dive team, it's been a slow year for the dive team, but that's a good thing. We have had no callouts, which that means no drownings, anything like that. It's been a good year. You know, they like to go out and train. They do a lot of training. They just got back from Okoboji with an ice dive. They went down and trained with their dive team. See what kind of equipment they have. It's a giant network with Lake County. There's one out of Yankton, and again, the one in Okoboji. One of the, one of the interesting things we've been doing is working closely with the Sioux Falls Fire. They are starting a dive team, so we're kind of integrating with them. And the, the gist of it is, what we like to see is Sioux Falls Fire can make an immediate response as they will have their equipment with them. And then we can backfill with, as we have larger numbers of people to, if it becomes a long-term type situation. With all these housing developments that have been going up in Sioux Falls with the ponds, digging the ponds, they're, they're all over right now. Luckily, we haven't had any emergencies, but we're kind of seeing the future that there's a possibility of that. Here's some other things that the office does. Again, it's been a slow year for disasters other than the duracios. You know, we haven't had the flooding. There is a higher chance of flooding this year, but the outlook is still, is still good. It just depends on what happens this spring. Hopefully, we don't get several days of 75-degree weather and the melt all comes at once. Any questions for me?
Questions from the question.
Mr. Chair?
Please, sir.
Thanks for being here, Jason. This is an area of interest to mine, and I appreciate what you do and all throughout the county. Again, a lot of volunteer civic engagement that goes into all this. One line of questioning I'd have, which actually hearkens back to our last agenda item. I think you were in here just thinking about the CO2 pipelines and their potential. Just in broad terms, we don't have to go too deep, but just at a high level, what, what concerns do those raise for you just as a, as a novel issue for the county? And what training have you and the teams around you been exposed to so far? What have you kind of learned just generally?
So in my meetings with the pipeline, I think it's more of a check-the-box thing for them right now where they come out and meet with me. We did have a, they gave a presentation here a couple of weeks ago at the Alliance about pipeline safety. A lot of fire departments were there, over from Iowa and South Dakota. You know, they haven't had any hands-on training. It's my understanding that, what I've been told is that once it gets closer to dig time, to where they're putting in the pipeline, then they're going to go start more robust training. They have offered equipment. You know, we'll see how that turns out. But, you know, the safety issues, obviously they are, because if, if, if a CO2 pipeline ruptures, if there's somebody there like with a piece of equipment, it's probably going to be a recovery. And you can go online and see some of the CO2 pipeline ruptures that they've tested. And, you know, it just takes away the oxygen in that area. Depending on the weather conditions, it can dissipate really fast or it can linger. So there's all kinds of variables that, that we look at on that. But there is a safety issue.
Mr. Chair, one follow-up there. When, can you go into a little bit more detail on the equipment? And maybe just give an overview when it comes to emergency management, just our, our state of readiness generally? CO2 maybe being one potential type of response, but, but I see some folks in the audience, especially from volunteer fire, what, what type of equipment level readiness are we at now? And what type of equipment are we talking about here that needs upgrading?
Well, that would be more for the fire to answer specifically, but I can, you know, just give you some of the stuff that they've offered is air monitoring equipment, breathing, breathing apparatus, you know, maybe, they even mentioned a cast, an additional cascade system. Maybe more of a portable one on a trailer. I'm going to explore that a little bit too. But again, we're a ways off on that yet, but I'm sure Rural Fire can fill you in on more details on what their needs are.
Commissioner Blainberg?
Thank you. Just curious about the decreased number of volunteers that you're seeing. You said with the police reserves. And I know I've heard that volunteer firemen are also, like, volunteers are just dwindling. The numbers are dwindling. Can you tell me more about what you think maybe is the cause of that? And also any solutions, any ideas, or anything we're doing currently to, to recruit more volunteers?
Well, it has been a problem, not just this year, but probably the last seven to 10 years. The volunteerism has kind of dropped off, and people just aren't interested in it anymore. You know, one of the things, the dive team, for example, I have a waiting list to get on that. People love to dive, and if they're passionate about it, that's what they love to do. And it's a, it's a pretty good following that we have there. Police reserves, we've lost a lot of police reserves actually being hired by other agencies, which we don't see a lot, and we haven't seen a lot in the past, which is a good thing. I mean, it did cost money to train them up, but you know, luckily, we keep them in the area and they get hired with the sheriff's office or police department. As far as one particular, two particular things, I really can't pin down why that volunteerism is down. But it's a pattern with, with, with fire, ambulance, all over right now.
Thank you. I was just curious too if there's any, any plans or any strategies that we have in place to increase awareness or?
We utilize the media at least once or twice a year for the police reserves. When we're, when we're taking those applications, well, maybe a couple of weeks ahead of time, Doug Blomper will go down at the 10:30 briefing and, and kind of get the word out that we're looking. If you see that sign up there, there was recently a car show out at the arena. And we put our track vehicle out there, and I did get some interest from that, just advertising that way. The fair, you know, we have those signs out and keep visible during that and see a lot of people. You get a lot of interest after that, but you know, some people do it for a month, and then they decide it's not for them and they leave. Others have been there for 20-plus years, so.
My questions are on the same line as Commissioner Blainberg. I looked at your pictures and, you know, you've got all the neatest fun equipment that you can go out and train on and work with, and you have 40 volunteers. I mean, that's probably lifelong friendships that are formed there. You know, just the recruiting strategy and techniques that you use. So I was just curious about that too, so.
Word of mouth goes a long ways too, where if people are really interested, they might get their friends involved.
Yeah.
Relatives, things like that.
Okay. Okay, anybody from the public want to comment on this presentation? Alright, this is no action on this, but a presentation. Any comment on the weather?
Well, on a follow-up, I'm going to have ambulance and fire kind of come up and give their own little spiel.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Sorry about that. Didn't mean to overlook you guys.
Morning Commissioners. Mike Harstead, President to the Minnaha County Fire Chiefs Association.
And a proud Jackrabbit.
And a Jackrabbit. Go Jax. Yes. Got a few members of some of our local departments here this morning. Baltic and Humboldt, Del Rapids, Baltic, Garrettson. So just want to give you a little brief update on how things are going in the county with fire. I just first want to start with, we've got a couple of new faces on the Commission. It's nice to see. Just give you a little background on the Chiefs Association. Not only am I volunteer in Crooks, have been the fire chief in Crooks for 22 years, but I also work up at Rosenbauer. We build fire trucks all over the world. And it's a unique opportunity for me to get to see and visit with firemen literally across the world. And something that we have here in Minnaha County is unique and special. Our Chiefs Association, we get together every month. We work together on virtually everything that, that's going on in our county fire-wise. And that's unique. It's, the fire service in itself is, is very territorial. And the, the mutual aid system that we have in place in our county is unique. There's nothing else like it in the state of South Dakota, and there's very few collaborations like that available across our country. We've done that because, as most of you are well aware, the, our county is a series of bedroom communities all feeding Sioux Falls. And so volunteerism and the opportunity to have people present during the day, all hours of the night, is at sometimes very critical. And, you know, so when, if there's a call at nine o'clock in the morning in Crooks, there aren't going to be too many of my members around to respond to that. There'll be seven of us up at Rosenbauer, seven miles away, that will respond. But when you, if you have a fire in the middle of the day in Crooks, you're also going to get paged from Renner and from Hartford and from Lyons, and most likely a station or two in Sioux Falls as well, so that we can make sure that the appropriate amount of help is on the way. And you just, you're not going to see that in most other places around. So it's very unique. 2022, one of the main functions of the Chiefs Association is to train and prepare our membership for new firefighters, for new fire officers, and so forth. In the last three to four years, we have seen more turnover at the, the leadership level of our departments than I've ever seen in my 22 years. So not only do we keep doing new firefighter training, in 2022, we, we trained 22 new firemen across the county. But we also do, every once in a while, when we see need, we do a fire officer training class. And this is to those new leaders, helping prepare them to take over and to assume those leadership roles within the departments. So this last year, we did hold a fire officer class, and we put new, eight new people through that, which is just, it's, again, it's, it's a way to ensure the, the, the machine rolls on, so to speak. Something else that we did new this year that has not been, I've been going to Chiefs meetings for a little over 20 years now, and all that we've done in that time with our membership is, is subtracted people, as the fire departments in Sherman and Wayne Township have gone away. This year, we added, we, we expanded our, our membership. We added Del Rapids, Garrettson, and Humboldt volunteer ambulances to our Chiefs Association, so they're incorporated into our meetings. We work with those folks every single day, all the time. So we wanted to put them, give them a seat at the table with us to, to just more cohesion within what we're doing. So we added some people this year. A huge project that we got accomplished last year, we have, we have radios. My wife gives me crap because I come home from every Chiefs Association meeting, and she says, "Did you talk about radios?" "Yeah, we talked about radios." We're, we're changing over the radio system to a P-25 compliant, and it required a massive amount of work to change over radios, to upgrade our radios. We did a lot of that work on our own, but you guys got us across the finish line last summer. We used some of that ARPA funding. We purchased about $800,000 in physical radios, which we couldn't, we were, we've, we've exhausted our grant opportunities and everything else. So we really appreciate the help getting across the finish line. To talk about some of the struggles that we've had, that, that business was handled in July. We still don't have about half of those radios. The day that we got approved for them, we ordered them. And it's, it's the, the supply chain issues that every, it's affecting everything in the world, and radios and, and communication equipment are no stranger to that. We've gotten about half of the stuff in. We're working with Sioux Falls Two Way to get the rest of it going and so forth. We have no doubt that the critical deadline for that is probably October, November this year, and we will have our stuff in place by then. Call volume, like I said, I've been doing this an awful long time. When I started in Crooks in the, in the late 90s, we responded to 40 calls that year. Last year, we responded to 140. The, the, you know, Jason talked about the volunteerism. We haven't seen a critical drop in membership across the county. But we're, we're, we're teetering on a point there, because not only is volunteerism across the nation is down, but the call volume that we're seeing in the county is, is just expanding exponentially every, every year. I'll give you three great examples. Last year, Hartford, Hartford with a population of 2,600 people, Hartford Fire Department responded to 463 calls for service last year. It's a call and a half a day. Brandon with, with 10,000 people over there. Brandon, they, they work with MedStar as far as some of their medical response, so they don't go to a lot of the same calls that some of our departments do. They still responded to 564 calls. As a county, we responded to nearly 2,600 calls for the volunteer fire departments. That's seven and a half per day. And we have over 300 volunteers, but it's taxing. And what I'm seeing from the, the larger call volumes, the, the Del Rapids, the Hartford, the Brandon's, and even, even some of the other ones, firemen are getting burned out. We're asking an awful lot out of volunteer resources to, to take care of our emergency needs. And it's something that, it may not be a front burner issue today. I think in the next five to seven years, that's going to turn into a little bit more of a critical need. So it's, it's out there and it's coming, but so far, we're doing a pretty good job managing it. We do several things volunteer incentive-wise. We've received a few grants from FEMA for volunteer staffing and recruitment initiatives. Hopefully, you've seen some of our volunteer firefighter commercials in the past. We've, we do quite a few things to try and keep things relevant and, and so forth. So, you know, when we, we talk about the, the challenges that we see coming in the future, you know, our, the population in Sioux Falls continues to grow a lot. I saw, I saw a post, you know, the, the mayor was out putting the new population sign up, and I think Sioux Falls is over 200,000 now. And not only is that city growing, but the, the urban sprawl of it, the rest of the, the metro area is growing as well. You know, communities like Brandon, Crooks, Del Rapids, Hartford are, are growing rapidly. And that, our call volume is, is never going to go down. It never does. There's always a 5% to 7% increase. You can see that year over just about everything for the last 10 to 15 years. So we're working really hard to, to be out in front of that, to prepare, to be ready to train these guys that, that come in, to train new leadership that's there. It's just, it's a, it's an ever, it's an ever-present problem. The other thing that we see this last year has really affected us is the inflation, the cost of the equipment that we have. Jason Slade had a couple of great pictures of some of the stuff that EM has. I'll tell you firsthand, if you go across the state, the departments in Minnaha County have the best stuff there is. And, and the reason for that is, we have the population center, and we have the, the capability to do that. Our departments work together a lot on our purchases, as far as streamlining things, breathing apparatus and air monitors and things like that. We, we do as much as we can as far as group purchasing and things like that to, to simplify things. But the costs are blowing up. You know, the radios, for example, the radios that we ordered in July, they're $1,200 more expensive today if I had to go buy some. And, you know, we got that big purchase done, well, now that onus falls on the local departments to maintain and, and keep up with that equipment. So the, the, the call volume, everything else keeps increasing, and our, it seems like our resources continue to flatline and don't keep up with that need. But it is what it is, and so far, we're, we're doing pretty good. So I guess that's kind of the state of fire in the county for now. Take any questions or comments you have.
Questions for the chief? Big comment, just thank you. I mean, thank you to everybody, fellow chiefs, and, you know, everybody that's answering those calls. I mean, every time they answer a call, it's, it's, it's a huge commitment. You never know what you're going to, so appreciate the work that's being done.
Alright. Thank you.
Alrighty. Are we done, Jason? Ambulance? Okay.
Not quite done yet. My name's Ryan Sittig. I'm the Director of the Ambulance Service in Del Rapids.
I'm the director of the ambulance service in Del Rapids, and, uh, we're just going to each take a quick thirty seconds maybe here and then let Tim wrap up. But, uh, I, I would echo a lot of the statements that, um, uh, Mike had mentioned as well, that we are busier than we ever have been. Um, right now, we're pushing, uh, we're closer to two calls a day up in Del Rapids than we are, than we, uh, are to one call a day. Uh, we're like one point seven five calls a day, something like that is our average right now, which is blowing us out of the water for last year, which was our record year for us. Um, and so we're to the point now where it's really hard to ask a volunteer to cover a shift. For example, Sunday, um, our day crew ran seven ambulance calls. Well, there's no volunteer that, I mean, that can do that, right? And it's, that's, that's the entire day. Uh, plus actually we had two trucks out at one time. So, um, it's, it's difficult to find volunteers. Del Rapids has now really switched to a paid on-call, um, model, um, where we're pretty much paying our, our members to be on-call, uh, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Um, and, and that is there because we have a lot of people that come from outside our community to stay, uh, and work, and it's hard to ask those people to come up and drive on, up with gas prices the way they are on their dime and, and, you know, spend their money to donate back, you know, not just time, but money. Um, so we're, we're in that mode right now. Um, outside of that though, we are, membership wise, we're, we're sitting good, but it's always, you know, we're always two or three people away from what are we going to do? You know, that's where we're at. So, uh, always it seems like. Um, but membership wise, we're covering our schedule right now. Things are going well. Um, we're preparing for tomorrow. Um, it's ambulances don't do well in snow. Um, so, you know, we're going to be working with our, uh, rest of the county partners as well, to County Highway Department and such, to make sure that we can hopefully get to calls. And it's nice when we can cooperate with everyone and work together, so we appreciate that. Um, outside of that, I'll, I'll, Curtis, stop.
Curtis Nelson, I'm the director of Garrettson Ambulance. Um, basically echo everything that Ryan said. Uh, our last three years have been each our busiest year ever on record. So, it's just call volume continues to increase. Um, you know, as Ryan said, it's, you know, we're, we're okay with staffing right now, but we're, we're just a, a person or two away from not being okay. Um, we're, we're just kind of, we're, Garrettson's the smallest service in the county, we have the smallest call volume, so we're kind of the tip of the spear. And so I think we're, we're kind of seeing it, um, you know, maybe a little bit more than the other county services, but, but they're not too far behind us. So, we're, we're doing what we can to recruit, we're doing, we're holding classes, we're trying to get community members. We also rely on people outside the community, so we've also moved to more of a paid on-call, um, system, um, just out of necessity. And, and so trying to identify those additional revenue sources because reimbursements from, from Medicare don't keep up, um, billings don't keep up, and so we, we rely on other sources of funding to be able to do that. Um, and so we're kind of in this, this slow transition from a volunteer service to a paid service, but we don't, we don't have the volunteers to be anymore to be fully volunteer. We don't have the funding to be fully paid, and so we're kind of stuck in the middle, um, and, and trying to make that transition. So, um, we're, we're keeping up the best we can. Um, we're, we're like, like the, the county fire chiefs and like Ryan said, you know, we're kind of doing the best we can. We're, we're doing okay for right now, but, um, it's something that we're continuing it into the future is, is going to continue to, as call volumes increase and volunteerism goes down, it's going to continue to be a, a larger problem. And so we're trying to stay out in front of it as best we can.
Morning Commissioners, uh, TM Even Humboldt Fire and Ambulance Service. Um, just, uh, here to kind of touch base a little bit on what was, what's been going on for, uh, things out on the western part of the county. Uh, like I say, Humboldt Ambulance, uh, we've been around for about fifty-five years now. Um, our service is made up of, you know, medics, advanced EMTs and voluntary EMTs is what we are still currently running. Call volume for twenty-two was around three hundred and ten calls, I guess we had. Um, not quite a record-setting year for us, uh, that was the, the year prior, but, uh, as the rest of these guys said, if, uh, this year is any indication of what we got coming at us, uh, we will easily, uh, surpass that this year. Uh, we've been running a lot. Um, uh, like I said, the other guys already mentioned, uh, you know, it's no secret that our costs continue to rise, uh, and that it's including payroll as well. Uh, I was at a meeting down here in November, uh, the sheriff's office was in and said it's very tough to find quality employees. Um, and not only if you get them to retain them, uh, we're in the same boat. Uh, if we find a good medic, um, uh, you got to pay up. So, yeah, it's, uh, kind of, kind of the same with everybody, so, um. Yeah, and the money that we do receive from the county, uh, not only, you know, like I said, it's going to help pay for our paid staff for medics, but with that, you know, you're getting for us, for Humboldt that is, you know, you're getting a volunteer EMT, at least one, if not two, that hops in and goes on every call. Um, also, you know, depending on what community, including our own, where you're going to, you're getting fire, rescue squads, uh, most of our calls anymore are on medical, you know. Uh, we do go structure fires and stuff for, for the fire department, but we see a lot of medical calls. So these volunteer fire departments are called out to those as well. So there's, uh, the money we receive from you folks, uh, you, you're getting a lot of bang for the buck, I guess I would say that. Um, and with that, you know, our, our service, uh, provide thousands of volunteer time, hours of volunteer time, uh, between meetings, training, uh, the staffing for the calls and stuff like that. Um, back when we started receiving money from you folks, um, it was not intended to be solely, uh, the burden of the county, um, and it is not. We go to townships, municipalities, we have fundraisers, uh, we're, we knocking a lot of doors, we write a lot of grants, uh, we, we chase after money wherever we can find it. So we're not just, uh, knocking on your folks' door to say, hey, you know, uh, help us out. Um, I made the comment before, I guess, uh, and I think it bears repeating, you know, um, if any one of you got a phone call at two in the morning, for somebody that you didn't know, that says, hey, I need help, um, would you be willing to get out of bed, get dressed, drive to the scene and say, you know, what do you need? Um, you've got that in fire and EMS in this county. So back them up whenever you can. Um, you supported us very well in the past and, uh, uh, would ask for your continued support, uh, when budget times rolls around this year. So with that, if you've got any questions, I'll gladly answer them.
Commissioner Benega.
Have you seen any rate increases from CMS Medicare Medicaid reimbursements?
That might be a Ryan question. They take care of billing, um, so I'm just a fire chief and a ambulance guy.
Uh, Del Rapids does. We, we operate a billing company outside of, uh, running ambulance calls. Part of that is to offset the cost of us doing our own billing, um, and bring in some revenue for our, our ambulance service. There's not many ways to make additional revenue. So we do operate a billing company. We bill for Garrettson Ambulance, uh, as well, uh, which helps keep some of that money here in our county. Uh, and, uh, Medicare, uh, we haven't seen any significant increases. The increases have been very small, and we'll see what comes out this year. They're, they should be announcing some of the inflation increases here soon. Uh, what we are seeing however, is a lot of the claims being denied due to medical necessity. So we're seeing a lot more stringent, uh, looks from Medicare, uh, on, uh, the ambulance run saying, did, did this person really need an ambulance? And unfortunately, we can't make that determination right at the scene. It's, doesn't work well when somebody calls for an ambulance and you go, well, you don't really need one. You can't really say that, right? So I think you're taking them regardless whether they, they, uh, you know, you're going to get reimbursed or not. Um, so we are seeing, like I said, the increases aren't there and we are seeing more, uh, denials for medical necessity.
Mr. Chair, just, uh, one comment. As a new commissioner, these guys showed me the ropes and I want to give them a thank you. I got to spend some time over in, uh, Humboldt, Del Rapids and Garrettson, uh, and I just want to lay anything about, I, I love the civic engagement of, that it's a lot of volunteers, but don't make the mistake of thinking they're not professional, that they don't take pride in what they do. So there is a lot of volunteerism, but they're also very good and very professional in what they do. And I agree with the sentiment that, uh, we're getting quite a return on investment of what, what we, uh, give out and what we get in return exactly to have that twenty-four seven coverage and a, a, a group from fire and ambulance that are, are willing to take that call in the middle of the night. So I applaud their, uh, operations and I'm proud to be the liaison, so I hope to see Mike at, at some few, future meetings of the, of the Fire Chiefs Association. And also I would, uh, I, I went to one Fire Chiefs, uh, meeting in the past and I don't think the, uh, ambulance guys were there. So that's a relatively new innovation that, but I, I appreciate, I think Mike hit it on the head with the, that's one of the things I'm learning as a new commissioner, how much collaboration there is in our community, and that's something we can't take for granted, so we have to keep building on that. So I applaud you for including our friends from the ambulance side and, and making sure we're all working together. So I'll be happy to attend those meetings in the future to represent the county, uh, as well. So thanks for everything you do, you guys. Great to see you here.
I have a question. I don't know if, is Jason still out in the hallway? And I don't know if this is a, the right person or who the right person is to ask, but one of the things we've done, um, on a commission level is we've done the financial action network for the second time, and we do a five-year window. Do you guys have any idea projecting forward what five years looks like, maybe call volume, it needs for equipment? I mean, what the commission has done in my six years on the commission is when we, we, oh, we have some leftover money, maybe we should give it to the ambulance and fire department. I, I guess I'd like to see a more structured look forward, you know, what, you know, do we have, well, how many ambulance services do we have? Five, six in the county?
In the county itself, uh, I guess you probably can consider it five because, uh, even the, you know, patient care out of Sioux Falls does take some of the county, uh, property as well.
My, my point is, you know, do we have the right structure? Are we, are we managing it right? You know, the thought that in, you know, five or seven years from now, are we, we going to have to be looking at full-time? I mean, I, I guess I would like to see a plan that kind of, maybe not a plan, but at least a look forward for the next five to seven years. What with growth and call volumes and equipment and, um, personnel, what, what should we be expecting so that we can more effectively help you guys out? So, Commissioner Kipley, you're the liaison. If you want to take that on, you know, and try to figure out with Jason what, what needs to be done. Maybe there's something already that looks forward that far, but it seems like we kind of manage on a, a year-to-year, crisis-to-crisis basis, what's the next problem? So.
We have had a lot of, between Garrettson, Humboldt and Del Rapids, we've had a lot of informal conversation about what does five years look like? What is the need? How do we work together more? Uh, and we've thrown out a lot of different scenarios. Uh, we've talked a lot about a lot of different things, and I think we're still at the point of we don't necessarily have an answer what that looks like yet, but we are having those conversations of down the road, what does a full-time service look like, or, you know, working together, merging, or this, or what is, you know, all of those options are on the table. And, and so we, we are having those conversations.
And I'm just suggesting, let's have more structure to it so that we can, yeah, bring it to us and, you know, kind of formally sit down over a series of several meetings and kind of take that look forward, and you guys are the experts. And, um, appreciate your time being here today and kind of giving us the twenty-minute overlook on emergency management in Minnehaw County. Um, I like what I hear, but I'm kind of scared by what I hear also, so, um, you know, concerned, maybe not scared, but concerned looking forward, so.
No pressure on the new commissioner to get.
No, none, no.
Yeah, I appreciate your assignments, Commissioner Karski, but in all seriousness, I, I think what the sentiment I'm hearing from Commissioner Karski is this twenty minutes is great, but we don't want to not hear from you guys until next year for your twenty-minute session. We, we want to work with you each, each month, let's make some progress and, and put some structure around this. So, uh, I think some of our budgeting, uh, really is looking at some five-year outlooks now, so I think each, uh, service that we're supporting needs to be looking at five years down the road as well. And I, I know you guys are willing and able to do that, so look forward to it.
And I, I do think that, uh, bringing EMS under, uh, the Chiefs Association, uh, it, it, it forces you to have a meeting every month, so before it'd be too easy just to let that slide, so this would be a step in the right direction to get some of that, uh, conversation started.
Jason, did you have a comment on any of that?
I was in a pipeline discussion out in the hallway. I think you called me back in. Do you have something more to?
Uh, uh, no, just that part of the conversation. I don't know what things look like, and I don't, maybe there is a plan that's kind of formal, or maybe it's more unwritten and understood, but, you know, just so that, I, I guess I would be reassured by knowing that, you know, we're taking a structured approach to looking forward at what the needs are and, you know, do we need five? Should we have seven? Should we have three? Uh, you know, what, you know, where should things be? And, you know, you, you step on toes sometimes when you do that, but so be it. So, so, thank you, gentlemen.
Yep, thanks for your time.
All right, moving on to authorized chair to sign an agreement between Minnehaw County and Houston Engineering, Inc. for MC twenty-three oh five, structure fifty-two seventy-eight one thirty, design for replacement. Mr. Groan, how are you?
Good, good morning, Commissioner. Steve Groan, Highway Superintendent. I just want to add on a little bit to the discussions with the ambulances and the blizzard potentially coming up the next few days. We worked really well on the storm right after the first of the year with both emergency management, sheriff's department, ambulance services. When it got really bad and we had to pull trucks off, we worked together and parked sheriff's vehicles with plow trucks in the various municipal areas around the county. And then if an ambulance called in, we called in, needed help, we all responded together. And I do not believe there was a single missed ambulance call from that storm because we were able to coordinate, mainly Hank Trumble in our office handles a lot of that coordination, but it worked really well, and I anticipate the same process taking place on Wednesday and Thursday this week.
Thank you.
Uh, first one we have is a bridge project just north of Corson that was in our budget for this year. We did a solicitation. This year we solicited, um, consulting services from firms we haven't dealt with traditionally in the past. This one, uh, we're recommending a word to Houston Engineering out of North Dakota to do a type, size and location study, a final design and bidding for this structure.
All righty. Questions for Steve? Motions? Uh, public comment? Anybody here from, public comment on this? All right, look for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second? Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Moving on with highway, authorized chair to sign an agreement between Minnehaw County and JEO Consulting Group, Inc. for MC twenty-three oh four, structure fifty-one fifty-four one eighty, designed for replacement.
Another project that was in our budget for design in twenty-three, this has a construction year of twenty-twenty-six. It's the extension of Benson Road, uh, the unique one with this, it's only a half a mile from the city limits of Sioux Falls. So I have started conversations with the city to see if they want to work with us, being odds are this will be their road probably within ten to twenty years. Uh, JEO is based out of Lincoln with a Sioux City office. We have not done work with them in the past, but they have done work with the South Dakota DOT. Uh, we're recommending approval of this consulting agreement.
All right, questions for Steve? Public comment? Look for a motion.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion by Benega, second by Kipley. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. And authorized chair to sign agreement between Minnehaw County and SRF, Inc. for MC twenty-three oh seven, bid, bridge improvement program application. Mr. Groan.
This is a different, uh, solicitation, SRF consultants out of the Twin Cities. This is part of the bipartisan infrastructure law that was passed by Congress last year. They have a bridge improvement program where agencies can, this is called a small grant program, where it'd be a two-point-five million dollar minimum grant, but we're able to bundle structures into one application. We're requesting your approval to enter an agreement with SRF Consulting to write a federal grant for, under this program to replace four structures, one in Valley Springs and three on County Road one oh four heading east out of Del Rapids. All four of these structures were in our five-year plan for design, and three of them were in our five-year plan for construction.
Questions? So they're basically paying somebody to write a grant for us, is that correct? Okay.
Yes, uh, TSNL work, they're also going to have civil design out of Brookings as their subcontractor, and that is the county's bridge engineer. Most of the work being done under this grant request is work that would need to be done anyways for the bridge replacements in the future.
Okay. Public comment? For a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Help me out, Cam, are we on fifteen or fourteen? Fifteen, thank you. I didn't know if I checked one off too soon. Authorized chair to sign agreement between Minnehaw County and IMEG Corp. for MC twenty-three oh six, structure fifty-one eighty-one thirty-four, designed for replacement.
Uh, once again, this is a bridge that was in our twenty-twenty-three design budget. This is on County Highway one thirty-three, just east of Crooks. Now, we're recommending approval to enter into a TSNL and final design contract with IMED Group, formerly Clark Engineering. and final design contract with IMED Group, formerly Clark Engineering. There is a potential that this will be a bridge improvement grant submittal a year from now. We believe it will score well, and this contract will get us ready to make that submittal to the South Dakota DOT if we decide to pursue that next year.
Questions from the commission. Commissioner Benega.
Steve, can you remind me when the state approves these contracts and when they give us those final numbers?
Last we heard, it was supposed to be at, in front of the Transportation Committee, end of March.
Okay.
So, we should hear by the first of April.
Thank you.
Yep.
Public comment. Motion by the commission.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Kipley, second by Benega. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Steve. Motion, Consider a Motion to Authorize the Auditor to Sign Cash Back Rewards Card Addendum. Mr. Kite, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ben Kite, Auditor's Office. So, yeah, my first item up for consideration today is, or allow the Auditor's Office to sign a cash back rewards addendum. Currently, Minnehaw County participates in a commercial purchase card agreement, allows its employees to use card, or purchase card for paying for miscellaneous expenses, travel expenses. US Bank has entered into agreement with the state of South Dakota and other states across the country to offer a cash back rewards program, basically allowing, very much like you might have in a personal card, where you, for every dollar you spend, you get some dollar back. And so, all the counties in South Dakota are eligible, participate in this. If we were to participate in it, it would not cause us to reissue any cards. Our account number would need to stay the same. Basically, we would earn about a 1.3% or 5% rebate on each dollar spent, generate, you know, about $8,000 a year, based upon our normal monthly spend, about $50,000. So, basically, some passive income for the county for really not much effort.
Questions from the commission? This is a state program that we're piggybacking on, is that?
Yes, right. So, they've got the, a master agreement with US Bank. We just participate in that program.
The state attorney general's approved and all that.
Yes.
All been vetted legally, and, okay.
Correct.
Public comment. Look for a motion from the commission.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion by Benega, second by Kipley. Roll call vote, please.
Benega.
Aye.
Kipley.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Consider a motion to approve updated open records policy. So, we're going to have two things here. One's on fees, and the one's on policy. This one's on policy.
That is correct.
Thank you, Ben.
So, yes, so Auditor's Office been reviewing policies, reviewed the, our open records policy, thought it needed some updates. We worked with the state's attorney's office to kind of just refresh the language. You know, state statute still dictates what an open record is and what we have to comply with. The policy really just provides some language that helps the department heads understand what an open record is, provides some guidance on determining if that's a informal or formal request, and gives them examples. So, it just needed some updating, not much change to it, but again, state statute still dictates what an open record is and what we must comply with. So, I look for your approval for that updated open records policy.
Questions from the auditor. For the auditor. Public comment. Please.
Good morning, Commissioners. Cindy Meyer, Minnehaw County. I would just like to ask that you defer this decision until the new auditor is in place. I think that it would be only right that she would have some decision and input as far as this is concerned, so I would ask that you please just defer it for a couple of weeks. Thank you.
All righty. Thank you. Cindy, did you sign in? Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. Any other public comment? Commissioners, I'll leave this up to you. Remember, there are two items here, and I had her personally from the incoming auditor. She asked for some extra time to talk about the fees. I don't think her concern was as much on the policy as it was on the fee structure. So, they are two separate non-related items, but just kind of what communication I had received. So, other comments, questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I did hear from the incoming auditor, and she didn't have any objections to the policy change, so I would urge my colleagues to approve the policy as recommended, and then we can have a separate discussion on the fee schedule, but I would move approval of the policy changes as recommended by the auditor.
I would second that.
Have a motion and a second for their discussion.
I would just, I'm sorry.
Please.
I would just say that this is driven by legislative changes and policies and procedures, so this is something that we literally are approving someone else's decision.
The states. Okay. Other comments? Roll call vote, please.
Kipley.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Ben, talk about the fees.
Yes, so we're asking for approval and a resolution to increase the fee to complete an open records request. So, as you know, we receive requests over time, and we haven't looked at the chart, or what we've, the fee is for processing open records for some time, recognizing that the salaries for staff has increased considerably since probably the last decade that this has been looked at. Currently, the hourly rate to complete an open records request is $5, and that's for the, for those requests taking longer than an hour. So, the first hour is free, and then the subsequent hours would be $15 an hour. You know, we reviewed the cost of, you know, not on our salary, but all the resources needed. The Auditor's Office came up with a $50 an hour charge that would reasonably cover the majority of the cost incurred by Minnehaw County. Not all the cost, but majority of the cost. We would, so that would again be $50 for the, anything that takes more than an hour. So, and then we also, part of that fee charge, we would request that if that fee were to exceed $100, so basically, we're going to be working three, three hours longer, we would have the ability to ask for payment of half of that estimated fee before we begin work on that. So, there's other costs that are assessed for these types of requests that are set administrative rule, which in the briefing memo, that really don't have any impact on, again, I guess, you know, just my general comment, that just trying to be a student of economics, I understand that economics can provide some education and better information for people. I think that, you know, $15 an hour right now really is telling the public that, you know, that we, our time isn't that valuable, and that, you know, we have, don't have anything really else to do. I think the $50 an hour gives the public better information for us when we're asking them to pay that. I mean, it kind of lets them know, makes them ask a question, is this something that's important for me to ask my tax dollars to be spent on, right? So, that's how I, I would kind of look at this as well.
Questions for the auditor. Commissioner Benega.
Ben, do you have an idea on how much revenue you generate with those fees?
I can't say exactly, but I would think it's like less than $1,000 a year. It's pretty minimal.
Mr. Chair, I guess another version of that question was just, I guess I can do the, basically do the math on dividing it by 15 per hour, but I get, just getting a sense of the quantity or frequency of these types of requests that you get right now.
Yeah, so we get about, I don't know, four or five open records requests a month, but remember, we don't charge anything for the ones that take less than an hour, right? So, that's probably majority of our volumes, those that charge are less than an hour. So, yeah, but a lot of these requests come from information, looking for equalization is probably a big one. People looking for the list of home sales that they can use. These come from, you know, a Zillow or somebody like that looking for that type of information.
Okay. Any other questions from the commission? I'll take public comment.
Again, Cindy Meyer, same comment. I would, I would ask that you would defer for the placement of the new auditor before you make this decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia. All righty. Commission, discussion.
Mr. Chair, did get, reached out from the incoming auditor, Leah Anderson, and she had some concerns that I think are completely legitimate in the sense of just wanting to get in and see if she can look at different efficiencies and just better understand what all goes into these fees before we would set them. I think that's reasonable to give this some time. I don't think there's any urgency with making this change. I think if it was just a change that was a matter of course, you know, just an inflationary adjustment that we would do every year, I would just go ahead and move forward with it, but it is a fairly large increase. I appreciate Auditor Kite's rationale, and I trust his judgment that there is a lot of work that goes into some of these requests, and it would justify and fit the definition of a reasonable fee, but I think we can give this some time and have it as a good first project to collaborate with our new auditor on of what's, what's the right fee to set here and get that done in due course, but I'd welcome any other comments from my colleagues.
I have a question, just to Gerald's point on the previous item. This one is not dictated by legislature at all, correct? This is our internal decision?
Don't know if that is more of a legal question, if there's a, what's reasonable as far as cost for FOIA requests. I don't know if our counsel is prepared to answer that. Don't mean to put you on the spot, Eric, but...
Eric Bog, State's Attorney's Office. The statute just simply says if the fees are set unless the local entity sets the fees otherwise. So, that was, as Auditor Kite had explained, it is very similar to an update, albeit a long overdue update. It is essentially that, just a rationale to examine the fees and the types of requests that have come in, examine the cost of the county to comply with those or satisfy those requests, and then set a fee appropriately. I think using the word revenue, per the previous question is maybe a bit misleading because the county's still doing this at a loss. It's not, we're not making money on these, these requests even if the fee is set to this new amount, so.
The cash is still being paid out to the, to the lease, the lesor every month like it has been in the past. This is just the accounting entry that we're doing.
Okay. Questions for Susan? Public comment. All right, look for a motion.
I would make a motion to approve the supplement from Emergency Management Fund.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Benega.
Aye.
Kipley.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on, authorized renaming the Policy and Procedures Manual to Department Head Policy and Procedures Manual. This is a big one.
Good morning, Carol Muller, Commission Office. Yes, this is the smallest detail that you are dealing with today. The policy procedure manual, we don't change one word, one grammar, anything in there without bringing to all of you. And at least twice a year, our HR director the past eight years has said to me, should it be called this? And we kind of just let it go, and we bring it up another six months. So, finally decided, let's get that changed to the Minnehaw County Department Head Policies and Procedure Manual. Nothing else changes. The content will still come before you. The same types of things will still go in there, and most importantly, everybody still has access to it on the internet. Questions?
Questions for Carol. Public comment. Look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Blainberg, second by Kipley. Roll call. Nope. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Consider a motion to approve updates to the employee handbook. Carrie, good morning.
Good morning, Carrie Dever from Human Resources. The next couple of items for you are also cleanup. This first request is to update three changes to the employee handbook, one on direct deposit, to make sure that we reflect that direct deposit is required, which it has been. We want to update extended sick leave to clarify the timeframe for requesting extended sick leave. And on 13.5, on weather emergencies, we want to clarify that people have to be either working or on paid leave before and after a closure to be eligible for a closure time. Again, all these things have been part of practice. We're just wanting to make sure that they're clarified in the handbook.
Questions for Carrie. Public comment. Commission action.
I'd move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Kipley, second by Blainberg. Roll call vote.
Kipley.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye. Motion carries. Consider a motion to approve self, new cell phone policies. These aren't new cell phones. It's just new policies, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Something to keep in mind for future memos. We're asking for two additions on cell phones to be included in county policies. The first is for the handbook. This is guidelines and responsibilities for people who either have access to a county-owned phone or who choose to use their personal phone for county business. I don't think there's anything too surprising in here. It includes the responsibilities for when you should be accessing them. For example, we would not want our overtime eligible employees doing work outside of hours unless they're reporting it. The second portion of this is to add language to the Policies and Procedures Manual on who can get a cell phone. So, the first part is for employee responsibilities. The second part for the Policies and Procedures Manual really outlines the process we've been using for determining which staff are eligible to receive a county-owned phone, whether that's to be rotated within the department or to be issued to a specific employee.
Questions for Carrie. See, you had help from legal, HR, auditor, county staff, so a lot of input into this.
There has been, and I confess this has been, what, probably a two-year project that we've been working on. So, glad to finally be bringing it forward to you, and appreciate all the help from the many people, as you said, who've been involved in reviewing this.
This wasn't a 20-minute meeting. We got to change these things, so...
It was a 20-minute meeting, you know, 30 of them probably.
All righty. Public comment. Commission action.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Kipley and Blainberg. Roll call vote.
Kipley.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye. Motion carries. Authorized Minnehaw County participation and authorized chair to sign the 2023 National Opioid Settlement Participation Agreements with Allergan, Allergen, Antiva, CVS, Walgreens, and Walmart. Carol.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Commission Office. Over the years, about as longer than what we've been talking about cell phone policy, but probably not as long as we were talking about the title of the name of the department head manual, we have had conversations and inquiries about participating in the opioid settlements that exist. We've been very fortunate in South Dakota that we're able to, that the AG's office, the Attorney General's office, has taken some lead on it. You had one before you, which was in October 4th. That was before you. That was an agreement for a certain number of companies that came forward. This is a different agreement that's coming forward. The one thing, you know, you always go to right away is what's the dollar amount? The dollar amount is not specified in there. This is an agreement that we will participate in that, and once all the participants have been pulled together, then people will be notified as to what the dollar amount is that we would go through and receive. And yes, the companies are listed, as Chairman Karski read through. Questions that I can answer for you?
I have one. I mean, we're participating. I know on the other, I don't know if it was the same type of agreement. Some counties opted not to participate. Is there any reason why we wouldn't want to participate? I can't think of any either, so, okay. All righty. Public comment. Commission action.
Benega.
Second.
Motion by Benega, second by Kipley. Roll call vote, please.
Benega.
Aye.
Kipley.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye. Motion carries. All right. Authorized Chair to Sign the 2023 Coroner and Medical Examiner Contract. Tyler.
Good morning, Commissioner, Commissioner Office. This is something you approve...
This is something you approve every year, the agreement with our coroner and medical examiner, the dollar amounts are listed there for you, seventy-two thousand dollars for coroner services and then two-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars for medical examiner services. And again, this is for your consideration and approval. Or approval.
Questions for Tyler? Should have asked this question earlier, Tyler. That seventy-two thousand, is that what we paid last year? Did we increase it?
It is, it's the same as last year.
So we didn't increase our...
The medical examiner fees went up a little bit, but the coroner service was flat from last year.
Okay, okay. Public comment? Commission action?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Kipli, second by Blindberg, call the roll.
Kipli.
Aye.
Blindberg.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, legislative update, Tyler.
All right, this update is through February sixteenth. We've been, there's been four-hundred-and-fifty House and Senate bills, if you add in all the fund commemorations and concurrent resolutions, all the et cetera, you get about, up to five-hundred bills in the session, we've been tracking sixty-one closely, thirty of those have reached their final resolution, whether they were withdrawn, sent to the forty-first day, or signed by the governor. One that I would point out that we're still watching is House Bill ten forty-three. Originally, that was intended to take a hundred thousand dollars off of the school district levy. That's been hog housed, I don't know if that, if that amendment has been accepted yet, but that's the pending amendment where it would essentially give every valued house a three-hundred, every owner occupied home a three-hundred-dollar tax credit, and that money would be reimbursed through the South, the state of South Dakota to the counties. So that's just what we're, one item watching right now. A new thing that we've added to this report is just to look at how the proposed legislation could impact the county financially. So these are the most notable bills that would have some sort of a financial impact on county services, and I'd point out two things kind of generally. The proposed legislation would increase our costs by a cumulative total of about six-hundred percent. There are some bills noted there that indicate they are revenue. That is true, but not entirely true, as it still does not cover our entire costs. For example, the DOC bed rate with Senate Bill fifty-one still leaves us about eleven percent short that we make up that remainder. The other ones are either not guaranteed revenue or, and this includes all of them, they don't account for what our staff costs are and the time and maybe lost cost, lost cost opportunities where they could be doing other things. So this is just some general information for you and for the public as well to kind of see how county finances are impacted when the state passes those services along to us to carry out.
If I may, Tyler, where are each one of these bills? Have they passed? Are they still pending legislation? What's going on?
None of these have passed yet. The, the, I, I know for certain the mailing of license plates is on the Senate floor right now, today.
Okay.
The rest, I believe, are either in or just out of appropriations.
Okay. Just, and I don't know how many of you have seen this, but right now, South Dakota juror reimbursement, or whatever you want to call it, is tied for first place with about five other states in the nation, I believe. And if this increase were to pass, we would be as much as fifty percent higher than a lot of, the closest states, so we underpay our teachers, but we overpay our jurors, I guess. And I, just to point out, the DOC bed rate, it's an increase in revenue, but we're still subsidizing the DOC with Minnehaha County taxpayer money when a parole violator is arrested and put in our jail. It's, it actually costs less money to house him for the state. My comments. Any other comments? Questions for Tyler? All righty, no action here, but keep us updated on where these things are moving. I get other updates too, but.
Mr. Chair, one, one question I thought of is, is, I have this calendar somewhere, but is crossover day this week?
Crossover day is tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay, so then we'll have a pretty good sense of what's remaining because that by default essentially kills any legislation that hasn't got out of one chamber over to the other chamber.
That's right.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
All right. We have now the opportunity for public comment, is anybody would like to address the commission directly? This would be your opportunity, please, sir, just if you haven't signed in, if you would, so we can have record of everybody we get to talk to. Thank you. Approach the mic and identify yourself, and you have five minutes.
Sorry? Speaking to me? Okay, so I have an issue, and I want to ask County Commission, in all due respect here, is an incident happened to me here recently, it kind, kind of upsets me a little bit, okay? I want to know in your policies...
What, what's your name? I'm sorry.
Doug Anderson.
Douglas Anderson? Okay, thank you.
So I want to know who, oh, well, first of all, where is it in your policy ordinance or even state law that suspended the Constitution or suspended the Fourth Amendment right? Now I'll tell you where I'm going with this, okay? I went down to do a lawful activity of paying my taxes and doing a title transfer down there at the county reg, treasurer's office. They asked me for an ID, I said, I don't have to show an ID because there's no, there's no crime committed, no articulable or reasonable probable cause that there was a crime committed. I know the reason behind it, why you want the ID. I'm not going to sit here and explain it to you because there isn't enough time in the day. Well, the gal shuffled the papers back to me and said, well, I can't do nothing for you. Well, that bank told me to go down and pay the taxes on it so the title could be transferred, okay? I said, well, get me the county treasurer. Well, she, she came out of her office, beating her chest, stomping on the floor, pounding on the counter, and demanded to see my ID. Hey? Again, under articulable or reasonable suspicion, do you have that I committed any kind of a crime? There was no crime committed, there was no warrant, no warrant for my arrest, no nothing. So who put in the policy under the ordinance, the policy that, that gives her the right to suspend the Fourth Amendment right? I, I will request it in a void of where that came from. I've secured numerous citations of constitutional rights, say, and before I even get any further is, is this. I ended up having to give my passport up and my social security number up because she would not do nothing. Deputy Auditor, you know where, very well, I secured her oath of office, and I fully intend, I fully intend to hold her accountable because there is nothing in the law in South Dakota that says I have to give up my ID for anything. So, I know, again, I don't know why that, that passport was secured, that social security number was asserted, and before my time expired. I will let you know that that social security number is attached to an estate and a trust of one I, I hold. It is, it is registered with the Circuit Court. I hold that trust, I hold that estate. What she did when she asked for my ID or passport or social security number, she interfered in my trust. That's what she did, she interfered with my contract. My trust is state. Here is the passport that I secured with the Department of State. I'm a, I'm a state national, I'm not your US citizen by definition. It's been recorded with the Secretary of State right along with other documents, because I requested documents. Where, anywhere do I have a contract with you people? Where, anywhere? I've asked, I have, there is none. The Social Security Administration put... The Social Security Administration did an agreement with the, with the state without, without the permission of the parents, or basically it was done under misrepresentation, fraud. I never volunteered for it, how could I volunteer for it? Because I was only a two-week-old baby. The parents didn't have to be involved in this. So therefore, that, that's fraud, because, you know, for a contract to exist, there has to be something that where you were fully engaged in, full knowledge of, in order for this contract to exist. I've requested this information and not one single person came forward to, to admit there was a contract. So therefore, I hold the contracts to it, and I also hold evidence that I'm not lawful holder of.
Mr. Anderson, I would ask you to wrap up.
That's fine.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Don't mess with my constitutional rights.
All righty, anybody else here for public comment?
Thank you for your time, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. All right, moving on to liaison reports. Anybody been working outside of the commission meetings? Okay, Commissioner Benega?
I participated online, virtually, I guess, Fair Board meeting last week, can't remember, I had a little difficulty getting into the system, but anyway, Fair Board is, has a contract with us to run the fair, and frankly, that is coming up, I think, in April, middle of April, so that will need to be renegotiated, so there'll be plenty of input about how that participation is handled. There's also two meetings set up with the Fair Board Association, I guess, and volunteers that are the people who have been part of the conversation about the future of Fair Board operations and locations and all that kind of stuff. There's one this Friday, I think, at eleven-thirty to one, and then again on Monday, from eleven-thirty to one. The last meeting that I attended was primarily in reference to former financial statements and outcomes of that fair association, so there'll be a lot of conversations in the next few weeks about not only the history of what's going on, but more importantly, about getting input from the appointed Fair Board Commission. That's all I had.
Okay. Mr. Blindberg?
I'm not sure if all of these items fall under liaison reports, but like everybody else, and especially Joe, I know we've been busy trying to get the lay of the land and meet the different people that we've been assigned to, so I've just liked to report back that I've had great experiences with every group that I've had the opportunity to meet with, starting most recently, I think, I was with, oh, well, just last, this week, last week, we got to do a Property Taxes one-on-one with the State Department of Revenue, which was very interesting and very informative, but I've also gotten to sit down with the helpline, and I, prior to this, would have to say I had a very sad knowledge of what the helpline actually exists to do, and I just was very impressed. My takeaway from that was they had over six-hundred nonprofits that they are connected to in a database, so it's a resource for any citizen, not just people with specific needs, everything from elder care connections, support groups for any variety of needs and situations that people might be going through. So that was super interesting and a great group of people. I also learned a lot about our health care that we provide for our employees in the last couple of weeks, and that we take good care of our employees with the, the health care that we provide. The Fan Committee meetings that I know a bunch of you have put a lot of effort into have been super informative. I think my takeaway from there is, first, there's a lot I don't know about how county finances work, but second, I have been very impressed with how, it's been impressed upon me how much we do with very limited resources and, and how that disparity continues to grow with time. So there's been others, I got to visit with the Conservation District and the museums, but all in all, my takeaway is I've just been very impressed with how the people that are involved in our county government seem to be looking out for the best interest of people that live here and work here. It's been a great start.
No other liaison reports, look to non-commission, non-action commission discussion. Commissioner Benega?
Well, this will be a non-action because I, I'm just, I'm looking at my meeting schedule, and there was supposed to be a city, county, and school board meeting tomorrow morning, but I think that's been canceled.
Yep.
So that's about as non...
Non-action.
Non-action as possible.
Yes, weather, we can, we can talk about it, we can't do anything about it. All righty, anything else? We have no exec session, right?
You have no exec session, but if I could, since I know the public is watching, just point out that we are in our final, final, final stages of remodeling in this building, and they'll be doing demolition and abatement, so you will not be able to take the elevator or the stairwell all the way up to third floor, so if you're going to the Office of Public Advocates or the Planning and Zoning, you'll need to come up the south steps, give them a call, they can come down and meet you also. Same thing with commission, you'll be coming up this side, and the Human Resources has, has vacated, because they have no access to their space, into the state's attorneys. So, and our goal is into the state's attorneys on first floor that they were using, which they vacated, the swing space for us. So our goal is on Monday, and hopefully the weather doesn't screw things up, that on Monday, elevator and everything's back in shape again.
So we get to use a slide out the window for today to leave?
Yes. So we apologize for the inconvenience, but I think for those that have been in the building have recognized it was long overdue.
Yep, thank you, Carol. Yes, hopefully they can work through the weather. All righty. We are done, look for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, same sign, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Oh, I get to sign a few things?